I would like to call to order the Temecula City Council Budget Workshop. Budget Workshop. Would you all please stand? Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, could I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alexander.
I'm here.
Mayor Potem Kalfis.
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here. Do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, we do not have any public comments on non-agendized items, and we also do not have any public comments on the one agenda item.
Perfect, so I'm gonna call the joint meeting of the City Council of Temecula, Community Service District, and the Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency. So we have one business item, which is to review and discuss proposed fiscal year 25 through 29 capital improvement program and fiscal year 2024-25 CIP budget and annual operating budgets for the city of Temecula and the Temecula Community Service District and the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, you may. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Before I begin, I just did want to acknowledge for the public or anyone watching this workshop, the budget presentation that we're about to go into, this is not the first time the City Council has seen these numbers. Each of you have been individually briefed on revenues and expenditures and trends, and so I think that's just important to put out there as we kind of dive into it. So I will dive right into it. So again, good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The fiscal story being told this morning is reminiscent of years past. In fact, we have been very consistent. We have remained very diligent in the intentional efforts associated with managing our finances. This City Council and those that came before you have subscribed to these traditions and fiscal conservative nature and approach to budget management. This City Council has also supported the long view of financial forecasting, which I too am completely supportive of, as it's one thing to balance the upcoming fiscal year budget, but it's quite another to make appropriate assumptions and attempt to balance out the next 60 months. I believe we have proved to our community through these past 12 years that we have lived within our means, we have not spent more than we take in, we have consistently listened to our community on priorities and projects, and to the degree possible, we have attempted to incorporate in our short-term and our long-term expenditure plans. We have also resisted any temptation to touch our dedicated reserves, and simultaneously, this City Council has made debt paydown strategies not just empty words, but solid action, policy, and practice. This discipline, year over year, as you will see in the presentation, is creating an incredible foundation for the very near future and will be instrumental in new community needs and priorities that will be front and center over the next 10, 20, and 30 years. I will never take for granted what it takes to balance budgets, especially on the scale of what Temecula has become in the last 34 years. With that said, I am pleased to share again this year that we have balanced the city's operating budget, we have balanced the community services budget, and the capital improvement program remains robust and well-funded. In fact, the CIP is the largest in the city's history, and the current funded status is truly remarkable. Funded status for our city will mark a very busy five years of building and maintenance of our infrastructure. With respect to our revenue, and as shared in February when we provided the mid-year financial update, we are actually realizing a softening predicted for our local economy. This softening is not unique to Temecula, but a variety of reasons have affected consumer confidence, consumer spending, tourism, and the like. We are not prepared to ring the recession bell, but we have a few quarters under our belt to warrant a more cautious and conservative approach to building each of these budgets based on actual and projected revenue trends. As mentioned from the offset in our presentation today, you will visually see and hear what we have planned, much of what will be familiar, and will also be reminded that many of these items are multi-year programs or projects that require extensive planning, design, administration, and construction. Today, our executive staff, representing the exceptional efforts of their respective departments, will walk you through the budget process, and they will provide the highlights of the annual operating and capital improvement program budgets. Director of Finance Jennifer Hennessy will summarize the proposed operating budgets for the general fund as well as the Measure S fund. Captain Chris Durham will present the sheriff's budget and highlight the department's special teams. Fire Battalion Chief Ryan Lubin will present the fire department budget. Assistant City Manager Kevin Hawkins will provide an update on the community reinvestment program. Director of Community Services Erica Russo will discuss the TCSD budget highlights, programs, and events. Director of Public Works Pat Thomas will discuss the capital improvement program budgets. Deputy City Manager, scratch that, Housing Analyst Heidi Urias, standing in for Luke today, will provide an update on the city's affordable housing projects. And finally, we will close with topics we've identified as future planning items to delve into further over the next few months. As with previous budget presentations, we'd like to run through the program and all the slides in their entirety, then take time on the back end for discussion and answer any questions. We believe that many of these questions may be answered or clarified when the whole budget picture is presented together. So as you will see throughout today's presentation, the city's financial position remains healthy with all funds balanced and all reserves fully funded. So a little bit about the budget process. The budget process begins each year in January with the review of the current year's budget and the development of revenue projections and the preliminary five-year forecast, which serves as the baseline budget for the ensuing fiscal year. In early February, staff held the operating budget and CIP kickoff meetings with all departments. Additionally, staff presented council the mid-year budget update, which reflects an updated fiscal outlook for the current year's budget. And throughout March, staff held budget engagement sessions with each of the city's four commissions to obtain feedback on community priorities. The commission member's feedback has been incorporated into the budget recommendations, and we have a separate slide coming up that summarizes their feedback. In April, staff conducts several internal review meetings which culminate in the development of the proposed budget and capital improvement program that's being presented here this morning. Any changes to the proposed budget and CIP that come from our discussions this morning will be incorporated into the final operating and capital budgets that will be presented to the City Council at your meeting of May 28th. In June, the final adopted budget and CIP documents are printed and distributed as well as posted online for electronic viewing. In advance of the budget engagement sessions this year, the city's commissions were surveyed to provide feedback on prioritizing the goals for 2040, the year 2040, for the seven core values that are identified in the Quality of Life Master Plan. Commissioners were also asked to rank their top capital projects from the identified but yet-to-be-programmed CIP Future Projects list. Survey results revealed six top-ranked projects. Marietta Creek Bridge at Cherry Street, acquisition of Fire Station 12 in Old Town, the Western Bypass Corridor, the South Side Senior Center, Climate Action Plan, and completing the Temecula Loop Trail. Each of these projects are in progress in one way or another, either through private development activities such as the Western Bypass Corridor or incorporated in other approved projects such as the Climate Action Plan, which is being addressed as part of the city's comprehensive general plan update. In response to this survey, funding for the South Side Senior Center, a small amount, has been added to the CIP to begin simply the conceptual design of a wanted and high-priority project. Strategic planning is foundational in the city's planning efforts to ensure that the priorities of the council and the community remain at the forefront and are reflected in the city's operating budget and capital improvement program. Projects and programs proposed in the budget and CIP are consistent with the city's core values identified in the Quality of Life Master Plan, or the QLMP. Performance indicators are measured annually to track progress and the completion of goals and objectives. On November 15, 2022, the City Council adopted the Quality of Life Master Plan, which continues to serve as a community-centric planning document of priorities and values for the next 20 years. The QLMP identifies the city's seven core values, including, one, a healthy and livable city, economic prosperity, a safe and prepared community, sustainable and resilient city, transportation, mobility, and connectivity, and accountable and responsive city government, and equity. The Long Range Planning Division has developed a four-phase, multi-year process to update our city's general plan. Phase one is complete and includes updates to the housing and public safety elements. Phase two is complete and includes the updated QLMP and Complete Streets policy. Phase three is underway and includes a fiscal land use study to analyze the city's remaining development capacity and market absorption potential for residential, commercial, and industrial development. The final phase is to work with a general plan advisory committee to update the general plan and our environmental impact report over a two-year timeframe. In December of 2022, the council approved a multi-year strategy to pay down the city's debt and unfunded liabilities. To date, both the Civic Center and Margarita Recreation Center loans have been paid in full, creating an annual savings of 2.2 million. Additionally, the city paid 21.8 million towards the CalPERS unfunded pension liability and paid another 3.3 million to eliminate the other post-employment benefits known as OPEB, or unfunded liability, which relates to the retiree health benefit afforded to employees who joined the city prior to 2005. At this time, Director of Finance Jennifer Hennessy will now review the fiscal impacts of the proposed general fund and Measure S budgets.
Thanks, Erin. Good morning, Mayor and City Councilmembers. The general fund serves as the primary operating fund and provides the funding required to deliver public safety, public works, community development, and administrative services to the city of Temecula. General fund revenue is projected to reach 110.8 million dollars, with sales tax contributing 42% of total revenue. Expenditures are projected to be 99.2 million next fiscal year. And contributions to other funds include a $500,000 transfer to the capital improvement program for the general plan update. The general fund will contribute 1.5 million into the fire facility acquisition fund to build up a reserve for the future acquisition of Fire Station 12 in Old Town, bringing the total fund balance in this set-aside fund to 6 billion dollars. And as part of the debt liability paydown strategy Erin just mentioned, 7.9 million in available general fund balance will go towards the pension unfunded liabilities to generate cumulative ongoing savings of 5.5 million dollars per year. Total general fund expenditures are projected to increase by 2.9% to 99.2 million, of which 55% is dedicated to public safety. Public Works makes up 20% of the general fund and is expected to increase 5.1% due primarily to labor agreement adjustments, increased utility costs, and the administration of a larger CIP program. City Administration makes up 15% and is expected to increase 6.4% due mostly to labor agreement adjustments. And Community Development, which makes up 9% of the general fund, is expected to increase by 8.1% due to labor agreement adjustments and higher consulting costs. The non-departmental category includes payments for the annual retiree medical contribution, CalPERS replacement benefit, and staffing continuity reserve, all offset by an estimated savings of 2.9 million from a reduction in the city's CalPERS pension cost as a result of the debt liability paydown strategy. And I'll turn the presentation over to Captain Chris Durham, who will present the Sheriff's Department budget.
Thanks, Jennifer. The Temecula Sheriff's Department budget is 43.9 million and includes an estimated 4.5% increase in the sheriff's contract rate, plus the replacement of two motorcycles this coming year. Staffing levels provided by the contract total 117 sworn deputies and 18 community service officers, exceeding the target staffing ratio of one sworn deputy per 1,000 residents. The city contracts with Riverside County sheriffs provide patrol coverage and dedicated sworn positions, which serve as command officers in various special teams, including the recently created robbery/burglary-suppression team, which has made a significant impact in reducing crime and increasing safety in our city. This team consists of one sergeant, one investigator, and three deputies with the sole purpose to identify and apprehend suspects committing residential and commercial burglaries and robberies in our city. The Metro Team ensures safety in Old Town by providing 20,000 hours of dedicated law enforcement per year. Now centrally stationed in the newly expanded and renovated Old Town Temecula Sheriff Substation, the Metro Team has decreased response times and provides more patrol hours in Old Town since officers no longer respond from the Southwest Station at the start of their shifts. The Core, or Community Outreach Resource and Engagement Team, will continue to address quality-of-life concerns, including homelessness, by working closely with city's code enforcement, building and safety, TCSD, information technology, and fire departments, as well as neighborhood watch programs, community education, and more. In addition to these teams, the city also contracts for deputies assigned to the special enforcement teams, school resource deputies, mall deputies, and a traffic team. I'll now turn the presentation over to Battalion Chief Ryan Lubin to present the fire budget.
Thank you, Chris. The fire department budget for next year is projected to be 23.7 million. However, the structural fire tax credit of 12.1 million is deducted by the county, leaving the net cost to the city at 11.6 million. The budget includes staffing levels of four firefighters per fire engine and ladder truck with a total of 78 fire personnel. This includes the additional, the addition of six positions at mid-year to meet contractual obligation reduction in CalFire's work week from 72 hours to 66 hours. The fire department will continue to meet CalOSHA requirements with it, with two in, two out for firefighter safety during a structured fire and serve as pivotal factor in recently upgraded ISO 2 rating, which puts the city at the top 7% nationwide for structure fire suppression capabilities. A total of 6 million has been set aside for the future acquisition for Fire Station 12 in Old Town. And for emergency management, the Emergency Management Division budget for next year is projected to be 716,000. This budget includes continued community education, support for the 43-member Temecula citizens corps, disaster preparedness, which includes an alternative emergency operations center planned at the Temecula Library, and a purchase of additional emergency shelter supplies. I'll turn it back over to Jennifer to finish up the general budget section of the presentation.
In addition to the safety departments, the general fund also includes the Public Works, Community Development, and Administration Departments, which has a combined budget of 45.6 million dollars for a 6% increase over the prior year, due primarily to labor agreement adjustments and the purchase of capital outlay equipment for the replacement of aged computers, fleet vehicles, and copiers. Also included in this category are anticipated savings in the CalPERS employer contribution rate for employee pension costs. The ending fund balance for the general fund is projected at 35.8 million dollars next fiscal year. Reserves are fully funded at 24.8 million, and after deducting for future commitments, the available fund balance is projected to be 10 million dollars. This slide illustrates the different components of the fund balance. Per budget policy, 20% of operating expenditures are set aside into the reserve for economic uncertainty, and an additional 5% of operating expenditures are set aside into the secondary reserve. These funds are utilized in the event of a major disaster, significant loss in revenue, or for a large unexpected expenditure. Reserves are projected to reach nearly 25 million dollars this year. A portion of the fund balance is assigned and/or committed to future costs associated with the capital projects previously approved in the five-year CIP and the Pachanga-funded deputy, as those funds are paid in advance. And then the remaining 10 million is available for future one-time appropriations. The city has a longstanding practice of not only budgeting for the next fiscal year, but for the next five fiscal years. This long-term approach to financial management has served us well, as we're able to forecast the long-term fiscal impacts of operational decisions made in the present. This slide illustrates the strong fiscal position of the city's general fund, which is structurally balanced with revenues exceeding expenditures. Both revenues and expenditures reflect realistic growth projections and include any known and anticipated contractual obligations, as well as the slow economic recovery as indicated by the conservative upward revenue trend lined on the chart. This slide further illustrates the fiscal health of the general fund by showing that fund balance remains steady and reserves are meeting the desired levels over the next five years. Measure S is the one cent transactions and use tax approved by Temecula voters in November of 2016. This revenue source became effective in April of 2017 and has generated just over 200 million dollars over the past six years. Fiscal year 2425 Measure S revenue is expected to increase 2% over the prior year to 39.4 million. Total appropriations are budgeted at 40.8 million and are in line with council's policy guidelines prioritizing public safety, asset management, capital projects, and community services. Public safety funding of 10.8 million is recommended to augment the sheriff and fire departments' operations by providing funding for 11 sheriff's deputies, Fire Station 95 staffing, and the future replacement of the fire ladder truck and inspection vehicles. Asset management funding of 4.5 million includes the 2 million dollar deposit into the street's maintenance fund and a 2.5 million dollar deposit into facilities replacement fund. And capital project investments for fiscal year 2425 from Measure S total 8.3 million dollars and will add to the 44.6 million allocated in the current year to fund 71 separate capital projects. And general and community services funding totals 17.3 million, which is primarily dedicated to TCSD operations and library funding. A five-year forecast is prepared for the Measure S fund, with revenues projected to slowly increase over the next few years as the economy begins to improve. This slide illustrates the gradual shift of Measure S appropriations from CIP projects to public safety and community services, as the cost of these services increase over time. Within five years, nearly half of Measure S will support public safety, 44% will support TCSD, leaving 7% for future CIP and asset management funding. I'll now turn it over to Assistant City Manager Kevin Hawkins, who will provide an update on the community reinvestment program.
Thanks, Jen. As the city rebounded from both the physical and fiscal effects of the pandemic, available resources, excuse me, available revenues afforded the city the opportunity to give back to the local and public safety community and reinvest in local businesses and nonprofits. Towards that effort, in our ongoing commitment to a high quality of life here in Temecula, a total of just over 14 million dollars was appropriated by the council to create six funding categories across a broad range of business and community support areas, known as the Community Reinvestment Program, or CRP Fund. Under the Business Support category, 48 organizations have received $10,000 grants for marketing digitization purposes. 26 businesses are targeted to receive $20,000 grants for workforce development efforts, and 11 businesses have received rent waivers at the TVE2 Business Incubator. And funding for Old Town Parklets, vacant parcel beautification, and the Sixth Street sidewalks are currently reflected in the CIP budget. Under nonprofit support, an additional 48 organizations receive grants ranging from between 5,000 and 50,000 dollars each. Within the Homeless Services category, 500,000 dollars has been provided to TCSD to help fund the contract with SWAC, our street-level outreach provider, and another 500,000 has been dedicated to the Temecula Creek fencing capital project. A total of 5.5 million has been dedicated to housing services, including 4 million contribution to the Vine Creek Affordable Housing Project, a 1 million dollar contribution for a future housing project in Uptown Temecula, and 500,000 for a residential rehabilitation grant program administered by Habitat for Humanity. To date, the city has provided 250,000 dollars in funding to both the Riverside County Sheriff's Department and to CalFire under the Behavioral Health category. Both departments have been able to facilitate wellness retreats, offer direct employee assistance, and help change the culture surrounding mental health. Temecula Valley Hospital received 1 million dollars for behavioral health services to facilitate prevention and intervention programs, provide educational services to support first responders, and other at-risk individuals in our community. Over the last 12 months, the CRP funding has afforded the hospital to provide outreach, education, and support to 680 individual participants. Successful patient intervention has helped veterans and young adults struggling with mental health challenges, so indeed, lives are being impacted in many positive ways. As a reminder, a grand of 1 million dollars has been awarded to Cal State San Marcos to facilitate tenant improvements for classrooms at the MSJC Temecula Higher Ed Campus. And another 1 million dollars remains unallocated, subject to future council appropriation. Now, I will turn the presentation over to Director of Community Services Erica Russo, who will walk you through the TCSD Operations budget.
Thank you, Kevin. The mission of TCSD is to improve the quality of life for our residents through our facilities, services, events, and activities, or as we like to say, creating community through people, parks, and programs. TCSD provides essential access to programs, events, facilities, and services that support the physical and mental well-being of people of all ages. Community services is parks and rec, and so much more, including inclusive senior and youth services, workforce and education development, homeless outreach, sports, aquatics, and recreation classes and activities, special events, cultural arts, community engagement, and award-winning parks and facilities. Our beautiful and welcoming facilities include five recreation and community centers, the Old Town Temecula Community Theater, Mary Phillips Senior Center, Temecula Valley Museum, Temecula Resource Center, Welcome Center, and the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library. The city also boasts 42 well-maintained parks, which encompass 15 renovated playgrounds, two premier sports parks, four pump tracks, two hockey rinks, a skate park, two dog parks, pickleball and tennis courts, two amphitheaters, two lake parks, and infinite opportunities for fun. The big highlight of 2024 is definitely the brand-new Margarita Recreation Center, which offers intergenerational programming for residents of all ages. This state-of-the-art building includes a zero-depth entry, 25-yard pool opening for lessons this summer. Our human services staff will be providing a variety of inclusive programming, including the launch of our all-day summer enrichment program, Camp SOAR, providing safe summer fun for kids ages 6 to 14. This program expands our extremely impacted all-day summer programming, which provides a critical service for working families. Signature special events were busier than ever this past fiscal year. We recently hosted Southern California's premier car show, the Temecula Rod Run, with over 500 classic cars and approximately 50,000 visitors. The holiday season also featured Santa's Electric Light Parade, the Christmas Tree Lighting at the Duck Pond, and the New Year's Eve Grape Drop. The community will soon be enjoying the Fourth of July Parade and Extravaganza, Art Fest, Color Run, and the new Temecula History Day and the annual Memorial Day Observance Concert, which will be at the theater this year, featuring the Temecula Valley Symphony. On a daily basis, we impact the community's well-being through our vast array of classes, activities, and programs. The Summer Fall 2024 Activities brochure features 56 pages packed with programs to keep our residents busy all summer long. Each year, we offer thousands of individual classes for every interest, including sports, performing and visual arts, crafts and cooking, and our award-winning and nationally-recognized aquatics program, which promotes physical activity and water safety for individuals of all ages and abilities. The tiny Harvesting Community Park Room is included in the CIP for an expansion to accommodate our ever-growing Contract Class program. One of the most popular destinations is our library, the busiest in Riverside County library system, and this guide highlights two full pages of library programs and activities to promote literacy, academic achievement, and social engagement. Now that summer's here, be sure to check out our award-winning aquatics program for the entire family. Whether you want to learn to swim, exercise, or just cool off and have fun, we have options for all ages and abilities. Find out more at temeculascA.gov/aquatics. Finally, we mentioned the demand for summer day camp. This year, that program filled within five minutes of registration opening, and we closed the waitlist after 24 hours because we had so many families looking for a spot for their children in that program. TCSD Cultural Arts Division focuses a vibrant, I'm sorry, TCSD's Cultural Arts Division foster a vibrant and engaged community through the visual and performing arts, historic preservation, cultural enrichment, and community outreach. Visitors to Old Town can learn about Temecula's rich history at the Temecula Valley Museum and enjoy an open-air art exhibited art nights, explore other cultures at our Culture Days program at Sam Hicks Monument Park, and have fun with scientific discovery at Penny Pickle Children's Museum, and take in live performances at the Theater in the Merc. To keep our community engaged, the Community Relations Team produces high-quality videos such as Around and About Temecula and Park Adventures and entertains our residents with their creative and engaging social media posts and reels. The new Temecula Sunset Market brings a vibrant, family-friendly event to Old Town. Join us every second and fourth Wednesday of the month from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. for live entertainment, a gourmet food court, and handcrafted treasures. Our Sports Division has once again had a busy year full of tournaments, league play, camps, and field rentals. As has become an annual tradition, all available weekend dates have been booked for tournaments at our two premier sports venues, Pat Bird's All Sports Park and the Sports Ranch at Sommers Bend. Our adult kickball and senior softball leagues have been popular, in addition to our traditional adult softball and basketball. The hockey rink at Ronald Reagan Sports Park will be getting some well-deserved renovation, and we look forward to opening the highly anticipated 17-court pickleball complex in January of 2025. This year marks the 16th Annual Temecula Valley College and Vocational Fair. Hosted at the Promenade Temecula, this event attracts hundreds of representatives from colleges, military institutions, and vocational schools nationwide, drawing over 10,000 attendees. This event serves as an invaluable opportunity for local high school students to engage directly with representatives and learn more about the educational pathways accessible to them, both locally and nationally. The Human Services Team will be expanding the summer food service program to Mondays and Fridays at Rotary Park and five days a week at the new Margarita Recreation Center. With the addition of CRP funds, the Workforce Development and Human Services Team continue to expand our successful intern and externship opportunities, including opportunities for young adults with special needs. The City of Temecula's internship program offers experiences across various fields within local government, such as economic development, engineering, planning, human resources, community services, and more. Participants are guided by seasoned mentors and not only sharpen their skills with hands-on experience, but also contribute meaningfully to the city's ongoing development. The city's long-term commitment to mitigating the impacts of homelessness on individuals, businesses, and the community as a whole is known throughout the region as our very successful homeless outreach and prevention program. Through collaborations with partners such as Social Work Action Group, Community Mission of Hope, RSO's Core Team, Project Touch, and neighboring agencies, city staff and multiple departments have been able to create a framework of support and accountability, which has helped 52 individuals exit the streets so far this year, totaling an extraordinary 319 street exits since the renewal of the SWAG contract in January of 2021. Additionally, the city has removed 22 dangerous and unhealthy encampments this year as part of our ongoing commitment to public health and safety. For next fiscal year, the TCSD budget reflects revenue totaling 20.6 million. Program revenue, which includes the income from contract classes, registration fees, day camp, aquatics, theater tickets, and rentals, is projected to be 2.8 million. Measure C, which is the $74.44 parcel tax dedicated to park programs and maintenance, is expected to be 1.9 million, and the Measure S contribution of $15.9 million provides the remaining revenue necessary to cover the operations to facilitate TCSD's wide-ranging services and programs. Operating expenditures of $20.6 million are increasing by 9.7%, primarily due to the opening of the Margarita Recreation Center and the labor agreement adjustments. Over the next five years, TCSD revenue and expenditure levels are anticipated to grow between 3% and 4% per year as the district continues to enhance its services and programs offered to the public. I will now turn the presentation back to Senior Human Resources Analyst Becky Odom to summarize citywide staffing.
Thank you, Erica. As part of the mid-year budget update in February, council approved the salary schedule for next fiscal year, which included the 4.4% cost-of-living adjustment per the city's labor agreements. Total authorized positions for fiscal year 2425 will remain at 199.2 full-time equivalent positions, including the five council members and one authorized but unfunded position. In accordance with the city's labor agreements, employees may request an evaluation of their job duties by an independent consultant to determine proper job classification for the work performed. This year, a total of 17 employees will receive reclassifications to their job titles on July 1st, the funding for which has been included in the department's operating budget. No new authorized positions are recommended at this time. To complement the authorized staffing, the city also employs a significant number of part-time project positions in various seasonal and support roles. A total of 80.9 full-time equivalent positions make up our project staffing. Five additional positions are employed, which are limited in term and intended to support the implementation of the city's new financial system and to backfill staffing for known leaves of absence. This chart shows the city's authorized staffing levels since 2001. At the city's peak, a total of 210.75 positions were authorized. We remain 11.55 positions below that peak with 199.2 total authorized positions. It is interesting to note that although general fund revenue has grown by 76% since 2007/8, from 63 million to 110.8 million, the city's authorized headcount remains 5.5% below 2007/8. I will now turn the presentation over to the Director of Public Works, Pat Thomas, to walk you through the Capital Improvement Program budget.
Thank you, Becky, and good morning, Mayor Stewart and council members. The Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, is a comprehensive five-year plan that addresses the capital needs of the city. Capital projects are those that cost over $30,000, have long-term lifespans, and are generally non-recurring. As Erin mentioned earlier, the fiscal year 2025 through '29 CIP is the largest in the city's history, with $927 million in total costs. The city has identified funding sources totaling 629 million, or 68% of the total CIP. The remaining 298 million is unspecified at this time. However, before construction begins on any of these projects, a funding source will be identified. Between the current year and next fiscal year, it's anticipated that CIP spending is programmed to exceed $293 million. The CIP includes a total of 113 separate projects segregated by project category. This slide illustrates the significant efforts of the city to leverage outside sources of funding, which has yielded tremendous results in recent years. City funding contributes roughly 36% of the total CIP funding, with outside sources such as federal and state grants, Riverside County's transportation uniform mitigation fees, the Measure A program, as well as other specific funding sources, make up the remaining 64% of the total CIP funding. The CIP includes the addition of 11 new projects this year. The Butterfield Stage Road Separated Bike Lanes Project. This project is part of the overall Temecula Loop Trail. It is an important project because it's the only segment of the loop trail that has a bike lane on the street. And this project is to provide additional protections and safety for that existing bike lane. We're funding the design of that this year, and we're pursuing state and federal grant funding for the construction. The Empire Creek Improvements. The Empire Creek Channel is located south of the Mike Nigar Park, and it's the next priority in the city's Open Channel Reconstruction and Repair Program. The I-15 French Valley Parkway Phase III and Phase IV. While this isn't a new project, we've broken down the remaining portions of the I-15 French Valley Parkway project into new Phase III and Phase IV. And the new Phase III project is to construct the overpass at French Valley Parkway to connect Date Street to Jefferson Avenue and add the northbound on-ramps at French Valley Parkway. We have funding for the design of this project that's been allocated through the State Transportation Improvement Program. We'll be starting the design of the project this year, and then we'll be seeking construction funding for the construction of the Phase III project over the next few years. We've added a project to create an alternative emergency operations center at the library, as well as other technology enhancements at the library. The Long Canyon Creek Park restroom project is to add a permanent restroom building at Long Canyon Creek Park. We've added a project to construct improvements on North General Kearney, and that's the south side of North General Kearney, extending the existing improvements and sidewalk which end at Long Canyon Creek Park and extend those to the east to Kai Pina Colada. The Sixth Street Improvement Project is to construct the Old Town standard sidewalk and frontage improvements on the south side of Sixth Street between Old Town Front Street and Mercedes Street. As was mentioned earlier, we've added a project to begin planning for a South Side Senior Center for Active Adults, and that will be beginning the concepts and planning for that project this year. The Temecula Duck Pond Project is to improve and enhance the spillway, the existing spillway, for the overflow from the duck pond. And the Vale Ranch Park Project is to, again, construct a permanent restroom building at Vale Ranch Park. Under the category of circulation projects, we have 26 separate projects totaling $647 million in total project costs. This is our largest category of CIP projects. The I-15 French Valley Parkway Phase II Project, one that we've been waiting for for a long time, is currently under construction. We're about 50% complete with construction, and we anticipate completing this project in early 2025. This project includes a $50 million grant from the USDOT, the Infra Grant. Pavement rehabilitation projects is a continuation of efforts to maintain the quality of the city's roadway system, one of our largest assets. We have over $72 million in pavement rehabilitation projects scheduled for the next five years, including repaving of arterial roads and residential slurry seal projects. The Marietta Creek at Overland Drive Project is currently, it's a bridge over Marietta Creek at Overland Drive. That project is currently in the final environmental and design phase, with construction anticipated to begin in 2026, '27, following the completion of the Marietta Creek Phase II B channel improvements. This project is funded through the State of California Highway Bridge Program. The Rainbow Canyon Road Pavement Rehabilitation Project. We are currently advertising for bids for the project, and we intend to construct this project this current year, this current fiscal year, and be complete before the end of the current calendar year. Majority of funding for this project was provided through the Pachanga Intergovernmental Agreement, and that's funds provided by the Pachanga Tribe. The Diaz Road Expansion Project includes the widening and improvement of Diaz Road between Rancho California Road and Winchester Road, followed by the final phase between Winchester and the northern city boundary. Diaz Road will be the northern extension of the western bypass. The I-15 Congestion Relief Auxiliary Lane Project includes the city-led project to construct an auxiliary lane for northbound I-15 between Temecula Parkway and Rancho California Road. This project is currently underway, and we anticipate completion of this project by the end of this calendar year, followed by a larger $50 million Caltrans project to construct additional auxiliary lanes between the other interchanges on both the northbound and southbound side of I-15 in Temecula. And that project is scheduled to begin in 2026. The Inez Road Phase I Project includes the widening of Inez Road to its full width between Tierra Vista or the duck pond entrance and Rancho Vista Road. And this includes funding from the Rancho Highlands Development Project. We're currently working on the completion of plans, the environmental permitting, and we expect to start construction on this project in early 2025. There's a new roundabout proposed at the intersection of Deportola Road and Jedediah Smith Road, which will utilize $800,000 in federal grant funding from the Economic Development Initiative. And you'll see a contract for the start of design of this project on the city council's agenda next week. The Rancho California Road Raised Median Project includes installation of a raised and landscaped median on Rancho California Road between Margarita Road and Butterfield Stage Road. We have funding to complete the design of this project in the current fiscal year, and we will anticipate funding for the construction of this project next fiscal year. Under the category of infrastructure projects, we have a total of 58 separate projects totaling $132.8 million in total project costs. The Margarita Recreation Center, the new intergenerational recreation center, which also includes a new pool complex, as Erica described earlier, was completed in late 2023 and opened for public use earlier this year. The CRC Renovation and Expansion Project. Phase I of this project was complete in 2023, which included mostly deferred maintenance-type items. Future phases include expansion of the existing facility and are scheduled to begin in fiscal year 2526. The new splash pad at the CRC Pool Complex is a replacement of the existing kiddie pool and is currently under construction and should be complete this summer. City facilities rehabilitation includes items for repair and rehabilitation of existing city facilities based on the Citywide Facilities Needs Assessment. The Citywide Sidewalk Project includes annual replacement of damaged sidewalks and access ramps throughout the city, as well as new sidewalks and missing gaps from the Citywide Sidewalk inventory. The Bike Lane and Trail Program includes a project to install multi-use trails in and around the Ronald Reagan Sports Park. As you heard earlier, we have a comprehensive general plan update, which is currently underway. Fire Station 84 and 73 are scheduled for interior improvements and additions. Plans for Fire Station 84 are complete, including a new fitness room, storage room, and kitchen improvements. This project is scheduled for construction later this year, and Fire Station 73 improvements will be completed in 2025, '26. Funding, again, has been received from the Pachanga Intergovernmental Agreement to augment Measure S funding to enhance the landscaping on the west side of I-15 and Temecula Parkway interchange. We anticipate starting construction on this project later this year. The Mary Phillips Senior Center renovation project was completed in late 2023 and included exterior and interior renovations and modernization. A new emergency generator was installed at the senior center using funding from a Cal Office of Emergency Services grant, and we also installed a lighted outdoor shuffleboard facility last year using CDBG funds. The Nicholas Road Extension and Multi-Use Trail Project is currently under construction and will connect Nicholas Road between Kai Girisaw and Butterfield Stage Road. This project also includes the addition of a Class I paved bicycle pedestrian trail on the north side of Nicholas Road. Under the category of Parks and Recreation Projects, we have 22 separate projects totaling just over $62 million in total project costs. Our Playground Equipment Enhancement Project is a continuation of replacement of playgrounds throughout the city with themed playgrounds, and the next project scheduled coming up this year is the Ronald Reagan Sports Park Playground. The Uptown Temecula Sports Park Project is a project to improve the Marietta Creek Detention Basin with a recreational facility that would accommodate up to 18 full-size soccer fields. And we continue to coordinate with Riverside County Flood Control District and Army Corps of Engineers on this project. The Harvest and Community Park Building renovation is to expand the existing community room at Harvest and Park, about tripling the size of that facility, to add additional rooms and additional programming capacity. This project is scheduled to begin construction in late 2024. And as mentioned earlier, we're planning to install permanent restroom buildings at both Long Canyon Creek Park and Vale Ranch Park. The Park Improvements is the continuation of general park facilities replacement using Measure S funds set aside for asset management purposes. The Pickleball Course. So we have plans underway for construction of a 17-court pickleball facility with lighted and paved parking, replacing the soccer field at the pit in Ronald Reagan Sports Park. Construction is scheduled to begin in July of this year and be complete before the end of this year, and you'll see a contract for that construction project on your agenda next week. The Roll Hockey Rink at Ronald Reagan Sports Park will be upgraded with a cover, new rink surfacing, along with other amenities. Staff has been meeting with representatives of user groups over the past year and is scheduled to begin construction on this project in early 2025. The existing skate park in Ronald Reagan Sports Park will be reconstructed with a new, modern skate park facility. Staff has held several meetings with project stakeholders to receive input on design concepts and is currently completing those plans and is scheduled for construction in 2025. There's also a new dog park project at the Mike Nigar Park that's under construction using State of California Prop 68 grant funds, along with County of Riverside ARPA funds, supplemented by city Measure C funds, and we expect to complete that project this summer. There's a new category in the CIP of Community Facilities District Bond-Funded Projects that provide for three projects funded with the combination of CFD bonds and developer contributions. The Butterfield Stage Road Extension, which was completed between Marietta Hot Springs and Rancho California Road, was funded using the Sommers Bend CFD bond funds. The Nicholas Road Extension and Improvements, which I covered earlier- The Nicholas Road Extension and Improvements, which I covered earlier, is currently under construction between Caig Girisaw and Butterfield Stages Road, and again, this was also funded using the Somers Bend CFD. And the Pachanga Parkway Environmental Mitigation is a project that was funded using the Wolf Creek CFD. So now I'd like to turn the presentation over to Housing Analyst Heidi Urias, who will discuss the city's affordable housing projects.
Thank you, Pat. The City of Temecula serves as a housing successor agency to the redevelopment agency and is responsible for the investment of remaining housing bond proceeds of the former RDA. Utilizing this dedicated funding source, the city council has approved funding agreements for two developments, which will provide an additional one hundred and forty-three affordable units. Shown on the top of this slide is the La Sasienda's development located in Uptown Temecula specific plan area, which will provide seventy-seven multifamily affordable units. The city provided ten point one million funding for this project, and I am happy to report that the development has recently been completed and with residents already moved in. Shown on the bottom of the slide is the Vine Creek Development, located at the corner of Pujo and Main Street, and will provide sixty affordable units, fourteen of which will be set aside for residents with special needs. After the city's four million community reinvestment program funding and two million in former RDA funds, the developer was successful in acquiring tax credit financing, and the project is now fully funded. Construction is currently underway and expected to be completed by summer twenty twenty-five. In addition, the CIP includes a new project partnering with Habitat for Humanity on a third Habitat-led affordable development that will include six for-sale, owner-occupied townhomes available to low-income families and individuals. This project will give the city a relatively rare opportunity to add another affordable for-sale homeownership opportunity to the city's affordable housing inventory. Finally, the city utilized affordable housing bond funds to acquire a vacant site in the Uptown Temecula specific plan area. This site is now dedicated for the development of an affordable housing project. In addition to the property itself, the city council allocated one million in community reinvestment program funds, which are to be contributed directly to this project. Staff is currently preparing a request for proposal, or an RFP, which, upon release, will kick off the competitive process to select a development. I will turn the presentation over to city manager to discuss future planning items.
Thank you, Heidi. As you've heard this morning, the city has much to be proud of and has a substantial list of programs and projects that are underway. While the budget concentrates mostly on the next fiscal year, we also keep an eye on the future and strategically plan for impacts to future budgets as well. There are a few items that I have discussed with several of you on the city council over the past six months, and I wanted to bring them up and gauge the city council on and receive direction and consensus on, before finalizing any of the annual operating budget numbers. The first of three is the topic of emergency homeless beds. So, little background, currently, the City of Temecula contracts for six emergency beds to complement our ongoing resources and efforts in the homeless arena in assisting folks to get off the streets and restore dignity into their lives. While our efforts continue to yield positive results in street exits, we are seeing a changing demographic and believe we should consider creating an RFP and/or advertising and contracting for an additional twenty additional beds. These beds would potentially serve women and children, essentially families that are currently found homeless within our city and in need of this transitional living. We estimate the annual cost of a one-year agreement to be approximately one hundred and forty thousand dollars. I'll stop there. There's a question there, and I'm encouraged to just open up a dialogue, conversation, answer questions that the council may have, but the ultimate question is, is does the city council, would you like to see appropriate funding added? More or less, maybe it's a placeholder while we work out details, but I'll open it up to the city council for discussion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, who wants to go first? Jessica?
Yeah. All right, well, thank you, Mayor. This is definitely something that is really near and dear to my heart, especially having just gone the other day. We went with the staff, myself, and Stu. We ended up seeing this exact service through SWAG. The six beds that are available currently right now that we are paying into has been a real asset, because it's not just dealing with just the everyday issues, it's these people who really want, who are struggling to get off the streets, people who've been there for ten, fifteen years on our streets, and SWAG is coming in, and they are working consistently with them to get them off. We have, just an example, we had one lady, I believe, it was like ten or fifteen years, right, Stu? She was here, and we just saw her over at this, at this house, getting the, her needs met. She wants to get off the streets, she's off the streets and getting cleaned up, and so it's really something extraordinary to see how a, when we begin to put forward the money and effort, what it's doing for lives here in our city. And it's, I just, I love being able to put some more money towards this. I know this is an issue for our residents and the people in our city, so I would love to be able to see how we can move forward. And I love the fact also, Erin, women and children, obviously, everybody here knows that the nonprofit that I work with, but speaking to other nonprofits as well, we are all seeing, I even spoke to Ann from Project Touch, we're seeing an increase in moms and kids on the streets, and that's, we have to take care of them, it's our duty. So I am definitely all for this.
And just to be clear, the women and children demographic that we're seeing the uptick in, we don't necessarily have a good solution or a good place at the moment. They can't be sent to any of these other emergency housing solutions that we are currently invested in or that SWAG's involved in, so it is something that we feel like warrants this conversation, so thank you.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm fully supportive of this. One question I have, and I feel like I know the answer, the beds that we currently contract with are not in the City of Temecula?
That's correct. They're, they're in unincorporated Riverside County area in the Paris area.
Okay, so they're quite far, and I think that's the biggest issue, is if we have women and children especially that are attending our schools, we want them to be close, right? We don't want people to have to uproot and head up to Paris, so I think it's vitally important that we fund this, and we make it a priority to keep families together, keep them in our community and safe, and we'd fully support this.
I agree, I would support it as well. The new twenty beds that would be, would they also be in unincorporated Riverside County?
They would be probably closer to the City of Temecula if we, if this goes the way we think it will. There's very few contractors that are providing specific housing emergency services for women and children, and if we go with a particular nonprofit, it would be very close to the City of Temecula in the unincorporated county area.
Yep, no, I agree, I think that's important, and I think putting our funding towards those who are not resource-resistant, such as women and children, is a huge positive for the City of Temecula, so I am fully supportive of it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just from our site visit of the one facility out in Paris, that, that really was a unique and needed facility for the people on the streets, especially what I've seen as far as the homeless. But we do have a new demographic coming online that is just people who are just being priced out of their homes, and the rental market even, so I think it's crucial for us to pick up the slack on this, and, what were you gonna ask?
Yes, if I could just ask a quick question. Erin, if you can explain a little bit more about what we're doing with the other cities. I know we're kind of working with some of the cities yourself to be able to combat this, it's not just Temecula, so we've really been trying to plug in as best we can.
On the homeless front?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so the cities of Temecula, Marietta, Lake Elsinore, Wildemar Menefee have been meeting for over twelve months, and it's primarily funded with a federal grant that the City of Marietta received, and we have a consultant onboard, and we've been actively working on really what I would best describe as a homeless, regional, kind of strategic plan that sort of dives into what each of the cities are doing or what they're not doing, and how, what resources they have, because frankly, this is a, this is a very complicated social issue that does not honor city limits, and so what we might be challenged with on any given day here in Temecula, I guarantee you, that same individual or that group is crossing over into Marietta, maybe Lake Elsinore, and so the goal, I think, to come out of this program subregionally is to really have maybe a coordinated effort, maybe there's enhancements in technology on making sure that Elsinore knows what Temecula is doing and vice versa, we're coordinating on individuals for specific case management, I think that's another big piece to this effort. So we still got work to do, but the cities are talking to each other, and the county is also kind of part of that.
And last thing, sir, if you could just explain a little bit about what we've been doing at Project Touch as well, I know there's been a lot of great conversations as well with them.
Sure. Project Touch, many people know is, has been around for quite some time, they provide an amazing service on, on certain demographics, certain level. We visited their facilities this week as well. They are spread throughout southwest Riverside County, including Temecula, and so Ann does a great job, it's just, I think what we saw on display the other day was a very different mindset, maybe in philosophy and also demographic that's being served. And so what, what I'm talking about here may not necessarily be the Project Touch demographic, I don't know, I'm open that to being convinced otherwise, but we're probably looking at something that involves specific women and children, and we need to find that right facility for that. I don't know, if Erica, you want to add anything to what I said?
No, I think that summarizes it really well. What might be helpful is for everyone to just sort of understand the different classifications of beds we seek. You have, kind of starting from the most urgent, you have emergency beds, and that is like someone is willing to accept help and they are, they have no shelter, and it is seven o'clock at night, and none of the available resources are there, and you just need to get a roof over this person's head, that's an emergency bed. And that would be typically where we reach out to Ann. Occasionally, we've done vouchers, like a Motel Six voucher, where for, like, we had a family one time on a Friday night, and we just had nothing else to do, and we did a Motel Six voucher for the weekend to stabilize them until we could really start the process on Monday. Then you have what we call bridge housing, which is what we're doing at SWAG at the facility in Paris, and that's really for someone who is kind of in a holding pattern where they just need to bridge some time until they get into an available bed that is either in stabilized housing, perhaps a rehab facility, perhaps, you know, any sort of treatment center, maybe even reunification. So it's bridge housing because it's literally bridging from the street to this new, more stable arrangement. Then we have transitional housing, which is typically where somebody is staying while they're often undergoing longer-term treatment, rehabilitation, maybe job training, reintroduction to the workforce, that sort of thing. Transitional housing is generally a longer period of time where we expect somebody to be not indefinitely, but while they are sort of getting on their feet and getting the skills and resources they need to reintegrate into society. And then from there, it would move into something more on the affordable, attainable housing spectrum where, okay, everybody's stabilized, whatever issues have been addressed, and now they're ready to enter, but they probably need a below-market-rate housing unit. So I don't know if that helps just kind of explain the different categories we're looking at. And this proposal that Erin described would be looking specifically at that parents or mother with minor children, and providing a bridge housing opportunity, which would be a stable environment. The setting in SWAG that we use in Paris isn't quite suitable for that for a couple of reasons. One is that it's so far away, as you mentioned. The other is that it is typically housing people who are, in one way or another, still in active crisis, because they're bridging into transitional housing. So a lot of times, these are people who may still be undergoing withdrawal, they may have some other active issues where we wouldn't feel safe putting, for instance, a mother with minor children there. So yeah, I think that that might help sort of explain the difference there, and that would be what we would be looking at. One final note is that Temecula Valley Unified School District, under the McKinney-Vento Act, is obligated to provide transportation to keep children in their home school. So while that's not really practical, if we have to resettle a family like we did recently to Riverside, they are legally obligated, but it might not be practical or even what's in the best interest of the children or family. Whereas under this plan, if we land where we think we might land, that would be something close enough to city limits that transportation might be feasible to arrange, so allowing a little more continuity for the children, which is obviously what we really hope to maintain, because, you know, as we like to say, the people that we're encountering now in these crisis situations didn't get there because they had fantastic, stable home lives as children. And so we really just want to find as many opportunities as we can to make this investment into our future public safety.
And this is, this isn't just an investment in housing a specific demographic, I think the wraparound services and case management that come along with that housing are critically important, as we all saw on display, and they would be the same in this situation as well.
I, I do believe, though, even in this category, there are subcategories that we need to consider, and, and, you know, even to Erica's point, you know, we utilize Project Touch as a last-minute resort that if we need to put someone in housing today, she can make it happen. So I, I think we do need to do something, you know, to, to keep that door always open with Project Touch. I know she, she's always said it will be open, but I think as a city, we need to financially set up something to where that's, that's, shows our commitment to that organization too, so, and, you know, and other organizations, because like I said, just in emergency homeless beds, there's subcategories that we gotta address too, so. So anyways, yeah, I think we're all supportive of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
We will, we'll heed that direction, whatever contracts that we need to draw up or whatever, will obviously come back before the full city council, and you'll, you'll see that shortly for hopefully a July one start, so thank you for that. Secondly, this is a topic that we've certainly discussed at length here at the staff level, but also at the city council level, and you guys had a presentation the other evening, public presentation. There is a vendor that is called Carisalis, and their specialty is really assisting individuals in navigating mental health resources. And I think it's important to point out, too, that I'm, we're coming off of the topic of homelessness, but this mental health tool, if we choose to enter into some type of subscription, isn't just for the chronic homeless, this is, this is for people like us that are sitting at this table, and we don't know really where to go, how to go about it, maybe there's insurance barriers, and so what Carisalis does, and they're currently under contract with the City of Marietta, the Marietta Valley Unified School District, they're also, it sounds like they're going to remain under contract with the Temecula Valley Unified School District, and so for a rough cost in annual subscription, we're estimating at about one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, and that backs out the cost associated with Temecula's children or K-12 population, and so it leaves everybody else. And a subscription of this kind would also benefit our employers, it would benefit employees that are currently working within our city limits, as well as the parents and other folks. And so with that, I'll, I'll turn it over for, for conversation. Again, this, if the city picks up this subscription for a one-year pilot or whatever we want to call it, it would come at no cost to our residents, so it's a free, it's an app, it's a mental health navigation tool, and if we go down this path, I would strongly recommend that we, the challenge then becomes telling people about this, and so you gotta do like heavy PR, you gotta do a big splash, you gotta tell people, a lot of marketing, 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 and it, it's usually like a QR code that someone can, can click on, and then they can get a list, and in real time, they can be helped to find the mental health resources and connect the way they need to, because we hear that a lot, that people are either, don't know where to start, or they're frustrated with the bureaucracy associated with getting help. So with that, I'll open it up to, to the council for conversation.
All right, I'll start with you, Zach.
Thank you much, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little on the fence, I'll just leave there. You know, we clearly value mental health services and support, the amount of money that we've, we've made sure that the hospital has resources, we just heard about that, and the investment in our first responders as well. One thing that I kind of struggled with when I was coming, you know, when we were sort of looking through this was, again, is making sure people know about it. I just Googled it, and the school district's link came up, and I was able to log in and receive services like through the school districts. So I think we have to really, if we're going to go down this path, we have to really make sure that, that folks know about it, because it's only as good- we have to really make sure that folks know about it, because it's only as good as the folks that are accessing it. I'm not opposed to trying it for one year. Although, the price tag, I mean, we could go a whole nother 20 beds for women and children for like a similar amount, which that kind of blew me away, the price of it. But I think if we do go down this road, if there's consensus, we go down this, there's got to be some serious checks on, you know, who's accessing this, who's getting help, how are they being helped, to put some performance measures in and making sure that this investment is actually reaching our families and they are benefiting from it. I do like, you know, especially coming off, you know, the last few years, we do see, you know, significant mental health concerns and issues in our schools, and, you know, that extends obviously to the parents as well. And while kids can access it at TVUSD, we want to make sure, you know, parents and folks that aren't parents can access it as well. So, I'm not opposed to it, but I do think that we need to make sure that we're that we're covering ourselves, really, that we're making sure that if we do go down this road, that there are some ways that we can kind of go back in the next year. If we look at it again, we can make a really good, sound judgment. I don't think that I have enough information from the presentation and then some of the data from TVUSD and from the city of Marietta to make, you know, like a really solid decision, but I'm willing to do a pilot.
Right.
I would completely agree with everything Councilmember Schwenk said. I am in favor of the one-year pilot program. I think for employees and employers and parents of TVUSD students, it's important to have someone help you navigate during these trying times. And I think CareSalus could provide that service. I think as well as getting the name of CareSalus out there, it would be important to partner with our public safety, our police and fire. So, when they go on calls of individuals having mental health crisis, they can give them a card or give them that code to scan. So, I think that's important. But I think it's also very important to have that checks and balances over that one-year pilot. So, when we revisit this in a year, we truly see the benefit of it and go from there. But I'm in favor of a one-year pilot for CareSalus.
Ms. Jess.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So, just thinking back, when this came in front of me seven months ago already when I was in Sacramento, this was something that really hit hard. Knowing that a lot of these issues that our residents are dealing with have root causes. So, if we can establish the fact that a lot of mental behavior situations are leading to transients, are leading to homelessness and other issues, I love bringing this forward because this is a solution rather than just, hey, we're just going to pilot something. Just to give you an example, just yesterday, I wanted to give this story. I was actually going to have her write it up. I have somebody who's very close to me who actually just received help yesterday, within 24 hours, who has been looking for over a year, who is wanting to commit suicide, really struggling with anxiety and depression, and within less than 48 hours has gotten help and is now seeking, is already starting to work with somebody this week. So, just to have that, somebody close to me having this, I was just really blown away, and so is this individual that is very close to me. So, I can attest that this is a great program already. The customer service was incredible as well, just so sweet, so loving. She actually, she had issues herself, she even disclosed that a little bit. So, on the other end, we're not just dealing with somebody who doesn't care. They really do care about getting the people the help and walking this bridge with them every day. So, I just love that. And just a couple of things, I mean, it sounds like we're all on board with at least piloting it. I love the fact that, you know, that it's really only like $2 per person, you know, in our city. So, when I look at like $2, I'm like, man, like that's less than half a Starbucks, you know? And we could be reaching out just like Marietta did with, already within just a few months' time. They've already helped over 90-some-odd people overcome a day of committing suicide and getting them into help. And that's huge. These are our residents, these are our kids, and so I'm just, I'm excited to see how this is going forth. And I really believe that we can do a great job with our outreach for marketing to really get this to the people who are needing it, to get this not only to our organizations, our businesses here in Temecula, everybody who has a footprint here in Temecula gets to be a part of that. So, I just want to thank my council for at least looking into it, having an open heart and an open ear for this, because I think this could be tremendous for any of our families and any of our neighbors. So, I'm just thankful for the staff as well for looking into this.
All right. Well, I agree with everybody. I think it's definitely worth a try, and I really would like to see actual numbers and data at the end of that one year to see... Of course, if you help one person, it's worth it, so... But the data sure would be interesting to kind of dissect a little bit. So, I'm in favor too, so.
Very good. Okay. We will begin working with them and procuring some type of contract. And then, Erica, I'm going to ask you, your shop, kind of run lead and bring something back to full council when ready.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure there are reports protecting the confidentiality and HIPAA and everything else that can be shared either along the way or at the end, or both, you know, in terms of who's using this. And I think that is going to be our biggest challenge, is getting the word out, so.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
All right. And my third and final sort of brief conversation piece is having to do with the balance of the community reinvestment program funding. So, of the $14 million of the CRP appropriated funds by the Temecula City Council, there is a remaining balance of $1 million. And in the spirit of transparency, I wanted to acknowledge this first and foremost, and then ask the city council to allow us a few months to continue our possible recommendations for this balance of funds, given some of the ongoing and unfinished business that we've been tasked with by the city council. And if that's acceptable and allowing us to kind of wrap up some of this research and that we're currently involved in, happy to come back, talk to the council. And, but one, I just wanted to make it clear, you guys have appropriated all but $1 million, and we haven't forgot about it, and we have some good ideas, but there's other, some things that may rise to the top as a higher priority for the city council, and we'll let that shake out by end of summer. So, I guess my question today is, you know, are you supportive of buying, giving us a little bit of that time? And then we'll, deferring any sort of decisions today with respect to those dollars.
Well, when we were just, when you brought it up that there was $1 million, my mind immediately went to rent relief and critical home repairs, especially for people who are in that, because we're in such a... For some people, we're in a really tight situation for the rent increases that have taken place over the last four years. It's absolutely untenable. I don't even know how people are doing it out there. So, that's what my mind immediately went to. So, I don't know, I don't know if that's part of what you're planning, but if anybody else has any... I'm okay with deferring it, though, till, you know, till later, just so you can...
Just need a few months.
Yeah. So, do you got anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I think, I think deferring this $1 million is important. There's a few projects that are coming up that we need to really think long and hard about. And if, you know, this, the last of this $14 million, the $1 million has probably been spent, about $20 million over. There's never a lack of a need. But putting a quick pause on this is something we should do. So, I am comfortable deferring this item for later this fiscal year.
I am comfortable with deferring.
Ditto.
All right. I'm nearing the end here. So, as you've heard throughout this presentation, the city remains blessed with an excellent workforce, is financially stable over the ensuing five-year period, with our reserves fully intact, structurally balanced with revenues exceeding expenditure projections, and a massive capital improvement program that is 68% funded. While our local economy is indicating a slow recovery over the next several months, we have conservatively budgeted our revenues to reflect this trend. City staff will continue to monitor revenues and will bring the city council and update if adjustments are deemed necessary. I do want to give a special thanks to the entire executive staff, department budget analysts, and our finance budget team, including Director Jennifer Hennessy, Assistant Director Ward Comers, Fiscal Services Manager Paula Majors, Senior Accounting Technician Catlin Dorsett, all of whom are foundational to our ability to build greatness while maintaining excellence in all that we do. And an extra special shout-out to our media services team, Jonathan Hall and Chris Drea, who continue to take our presentations to the next level with the addition of videos, drone footage, and top-notch graphics. And I know it helps keep everyone awake while we're throwing a lot of numbers at you. This concludes our presentation this morning. We're available for any questions that you might have. And then, one more thing. This isn't goodbye, per se, but this is his last budget workshop. And I wanted to acknowledge Mr. Pat Thomas, our Public Works Director. Pat has given over seven and a half years, I believe. He started in December 2016. But the capital improvement program that you saw on the screen today didn't look like that before Pat Thomas. And one of the things that Pat, you and your team have done an incredible job of is finding money, finding other sources of money to complement the general fund. And I think that pie chart that we showed, you know, is indicative of the efforts of Pat, his team, Public Works. And so, I know it's your last CIP, you're probably smiling when you see that big, heavy lift that's coming our way. But I just wanted to take a minute to thank Pat Thomas for all your time, your energy, your leadership, and your efforts. So, Pat, thank you. And now, we can open up for conversation, questions, concerns, anything the council wants to discuss. So, thank you.
Okay. Let's start with Jessica.
I loved everything that we saw. I have a whole list, but, you know, I think it just speaks for itself. So, I just want to say thank you to staff. Thank you for council prior and current right now. As we just see our city, you know, becoming what we want it to be as far as having parks, and we have great infrastructure, we just, we have everything. Somebody asked for it, and it just seems to happen. So, I just want to thank staff and council for that. One of the things I did want to bring up after talking to one of the other council members and staff, that's something that's been coming to our radar for probably a couple of years now. With myself being on here for three and a half years, I've seen it over the years, and I think I'd like to finally ask the council what their thought is. This being concerning our city council discretionary spending funds. I think you all know, we each get currently $5,000 a year to be able to give to some type of either 501(c)(3) or (c)(6). And so, I just want to talk to you about one of the issues that we're hearing is some of the nonprofits get to the point where the administration costs become so overwhelming that sometimes they don't even want to take the discretionary funds because it's so expensive. And so, I had a couple of ideas that I ran through with Erin just briefly. And what I would like to possibly think about, or maybe we have this discussion another time and dig deeper, is if we could allocate the funds, let's say for a district. Let's say I get in this next year, and there is $20,000 available for me over that four years. What I'd like to possibly see is see it front-loaded. So, if we want to be able to give out $10,000 or $20,000 to that nonprofit, we're saving some money as far as administratively. And at the same time, they're able to use it a little bit more accordingly and hopefully a little bit more quickly. So, I just don't know what you guys think about that, but I think the discussion needs to be made. Somebody also, Councilmember Schwenk brought it up, maybe adding money to that. But I'd first like to just see if we can do it this way before we add money, you know, not knowing the future right now. So, I just want to open that up and ask my colleagues what your opinions are and what you've seen.
Mayor Protan, you got any thoughts?
Sure. We'll talk about the...
Well...
On the whole thing first?
No, on hers.
Oh, with mine.
Straight to yours. Yeah, I think that's an interesting conversation. The one, so you're saying every year, switch the individual that's able to utilize the $20,000?
No, no.
Great question. So, what it would look like is, is we all get, per district, we would get our pool of money of $20,000. So, for instance, like District 2 would get, it would go to the district rather than just the council member. So, within that four-year period of time, that district would be allocated that $20,000. Because one of the, sorry. One of the questions was, is, just like with Curtis Brown, end up leaving early, what happens with that money? Well, if we allocate it to the district, that district gets a certain amount of money to be able to spend accordingly at that time. So, that way, it's not linked to the council member. And I looked at that, and I was like, you know something? It makes sense because really, realistically, it shouldn't be about us as council members giving out the money. What it really is, is about helping out our community. So, it shouldn't be of whose hand it's giving, but just making sure it's being given out to the community for help. But we want to be wise and be smart about how we're doing that so that way the nonprofits can actually benefit from it, than just like, either they don't want it, or they're like, this is too challenging for us administratively. The other thing I thought about is, is, or could some of that funding, could we send to, or have the nonprofit utilize it for administrative fees? So, that's another possibility. But talking with our city manager, we don't know what that looks like, so we'd have to dig in a little more.
And as far as the administration fees, that, are you saying just to fill out the form, to turn in, is costing the nonprofits?
It's a mix. So, it could be just to fill out for the grant and/or later on. So, they have to submit receipts, and they have to submit a lot of paperwork accordingly within time. And it could get very costly and time-consuming for nonprofits, especially ones that might not have a lot of money to be able to front-load that. So, that's one of the reasons I want to bring that up.
And just to be clear, there are hoops that we require nonprofits to jump through because this is the taxpayers' money that... And so, over the years, I think we've tried to streamline this as much as we can. But the reality is there is time and energy that the nonprofits require to accept and then be audited on these funds that we give them. And just one final thing. So, there's really like three buckets that the city supports the nonprofit community. One is the Community Development Block Grant, which is federal money, comes with a heck of a lot more strings than what the city requires. You have community services funding, which you guys are very familiar with, and there's requirements for that. And then, there's the city council discretionary funding, which each of you are allocated $5,000 per fiscal year, as Councilmember Alexander mentioned, so.
Yeah, I think, I'm open to changing it. I think I just need, would have to have further discussion on it, to really process all of it. But I'm open to, you know, changing it, but it would take from me further discussion and understanding.
Your thoughts, Jack, Zach?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, I agree with Councilmember Alexander. I think the process for this is, can be difficult on nonprofits. You know, if you have $5,000, and like right now, I think I have $1,500 left for this fiscal year, it's very difficult to give that money to an entity. It's, it doesn't make a ton of sense. I do think, and the $5,000, I don't know, it's been that as long as I've known about it. So, it's probably been like that forever, 30 few years. So, I would, I think the conversation needs to be had at a subcommittee. Do we raise that dollar amount to be more in line with costs and services for nonprofits? And this money isn't just going anywhere, it's going to nonprofits. So, you know, for a mere 50 cents a resident, we could raise it, you know? Like, it goes to very well-deserving folks that don't often get in on some of that other funding opportunities, and I think that's important. So, fully supportive of sending this to a subcommittee to kind of, you know, to talk this through before we were to bring it back to full council.
And I agree. I think more discussion needs to be had, for sure. But I'm open to, you know, whatever we come up with, so.
Thank you, Jonathan.
All right. So, Councilmember...
Well, first, just want to thank city staff and council as well. I think, I agree with city manager that there is much to be proud of. I think the paydown of debt that the city of Temecula has done, with paying off the Civic Center, paying off the MRC, and paying down the pension unfunded liability is absolutely huge for the city. And that just allows city council and city staff to allocate more money to reinvest into our community instead of paying down interest on debt. So, kudos to council and staff for that. I also just want to make a quick note to thank, as always, our partners with Pachanga. Pachanga was helping fund our deputies here in Temecula, as well as with the huge improvement of Rainbow Canyon Road, which is awesome. But again, I think there's so much to be proud of, and to Pat Thomas's credit, the CIP is probably the thing I got most excited about. the CIP is probably the thing I got most excited about hearing in the next five years. The roundabouts, the congestion relief, the Rancho Cal raise median, the widening of roads, the CRC splash pad, fire station renovations, playground enhancements, pickleball, skateboard, hockey. I think the CIP projects in the next five years for our city are gonna be a huge benefit to our citizens. And I am truly excited about that, as well as all of the affordable housing that we have going on. Heidi mentioned it, we're over $20 million in housing to four, four affordable housing projects, which is amazing. And again, that's, that's kudos to our staff and previous councils and our current council on allowing the city to pay off debt and allowing the current council to allocate those monies to reinvesting in our community. So I'm just excited to be here during this exciting time for the city of Temecula, and the future is bright. And thank you again to city staff and council for today.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's just start off by saying thank you to residents for trusting us with your money and continuing to trust us with your money. My council colleagues, I think this year, this is, marks my sixth budget workshop, and, you know, they've all been good. And I, I think we're headed in a, in a strong direction, to the credit of our city manager and the team, the executive team. And then the budget team that was mentioned, that a ton of work goes into this to get us to this point. Pat, you're hopefully leaving the OPM keys in your desk, the other people's money keys in your desk. Because as we get that, that CIP list, which is impressive, and I, you know, go down this list, this is hugely beneficial to our community. So thank you, you'll certainly be missed, but make sure you leave those keys. I made a ton of notes about some of the projects, and, and I think it's important that, and I, and I feel like I've asked for this in the past and we've done it, but is after this, after we adopt, let's do some social media posts. I like, like the city manager minute kind of reels where you talk about some of these things. Because you look at, you know, pavement rehabilitation, you know, like $4 million. Diaz Road, the roundabout that was mentioned, Inez Road, you know, we have new projects, North General Kearney improvements, $20 million in affordable housing, CRC renovations, the splash pad, the fire station renovations, Sixth Street improvements, sidewalks here in Old Town, library stuff, or Uptown Sports Park, pickleball. Where was our pickleball people? They were here for years, and now they're like, hey, we're just waiting to get this thing built. We'll leave you alone for a while now. Hockey, skateboarding, like this is really who our community is. And, and I'm just proud to live here, and I'm proud to, to be able to be in a position, to be up here and, and sort of oversee what we've built and now what we're maintaining. We live in a wonderful community, and the future is bright. I'm excited for Temecula, and I'm excited for everything that, that we have going on in our city. So I just appreciate everything that the team does for our community. You make our job easy, plain and simple. You make our job super easy. Thank you.
Well, everybody's pretty much said everything, so, yeah, amazing job. It really is, I tell people all the time, if you're gonna be on a city council, Temecula is the place to be. Because they make life pretty doggone easy. So me and Pat came on board literally the same month. I came on December of '16 also. So he's been the only Public Works Director I've known, so definitely gonna miss you. But we'll see ya. Appreciate all that you've done, and it truly is amazing what has happened in the city in the last seven years. So, great job and great job. So with that, I think we're done, are we?
We are done, Mr. Mayor. You will see something very similar to this in three weeks.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you all.
We are adjourned.